This is a test, this is a test, testing one two, testing one two, this is a test, this is a test testing one two.
So I'll leave it up to Chair Welch, do you want to get the meeting started? We have a few overview items to cover, or do you want to give everybody?
I think we should get started CJ, because a lot of us got up a little bit earlier than we're used to. And I think we should reward people that did that, so why don't we get started?
All right, so Fernando, I got Fernando here from IT, just let me know when you're ready Fernando, and you can go ahead and just give me the green light that you're, we're live, and I will start the meeting.
Yep, we're good to go.
Okay, great. First off, before I do get started, Housing Advisory Board members, can you see my screen? It should just be a PowerPoint with the agenda on there, all right, thank you. I see a thumbs up there from Jacob and Rhett and nods, all right. So good morning, welcome to our Town of Apex Housing Advisory Board meeting on Thursday, May 5th. This is a special meeting. The agenda for this morning is pretty straightforward, we'll have our roll call, which is Agenda Item 1, Agenda Item 2 is to approve the meeting minutes from our most recent regular meeting back on April 7th, just a couple of weeks ago. And then we'll circle back on Agenda Item 3 to pick up our discussion on the Affordable Housing Incentive Zoning Policy, and then there's a placeholder, depending on how far we get today, to continue that discussion. So it's a pretty straightforward agenda, no action items today, just other than approving the meeting minutes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chair Welch to conduct our roll call.
Okay, thank you CJ. So when I call your name, if you could just say, yes, you're here, that would be wonderful. Those that aren't here don't need to say anything. So Tina Sherman.
Present.
Thank you, Audra Killingsworth.
Here.
Martha Rogers.
Here.
Jacob Rogers.
Here.
Seth Friedman.
Here.
Paul Kane. Valeria Sessinelli.
Here.
Good. Rhett Fussell.
Here.
And the chair is here as well, so we only have Paul missing at this point, so that's, that's pretty good. Okay, that takes care of that.
Thank you Phil, and then Agenda Item 2 is simply to recommend approval of the April 7th regular meeting minutes, so just need a roll call vote for this.
Okay, so I have two comments after looking over the minutes. One is just very minor, and maybe it was intentional, but in incentive number two, it says inventive too. I guess we are kind of inventing things here, but that might be a typo, so that's a very minor thing. The more major thing is that I think we would be well-served by having a little bit more, just the highlights of the discussion that took place on each of the incentives. And the reason I say that is it's helpful before we start, you know, the following meeting, to be reminded of the kind of discussion that we had before. You know, just so we're not spinning wheels and, and, you know, going over something that we talked about before, unless it's, unless it's really important to do that. The other reason that's important is at some point, we'll be recommending incentives to the town council. And I think they will probably appreciate, unless order is taken, responsibility for passing the rationale along to them, but I think we probably should do that as a group. It would be helpful to have a record of those, so that we can kind of let them know what, you know, what the discussion was about, behind the things that we're recommending. So, you know, it's just a preference, it's just a, and if anyone else has any comments on that, I'd certainly be glad to entertain them. And, you know, I thought about the fact that we could say, well, you can always go back and, you know, view the recording of the, of the meeting, but that's kind of cumbersome. I don't think we want to put people through the torture of watching us over a two-hour period to get the highlights of the discussion. So CJ, I don't, you know, this, this would fall on you and Norah, I guess so. I don't know whether you have any comments about that, but I, I, I think we would benefit by having just a little bit more background on discussion that was made. You know, if it was fairly straightforward, then maybe we don't need any highlights, but I think there were a couple of incentives that we, you know, we had some good, good discussion on.
Tina's got her hand, go ahead Tina.
Yeah, I, I just, CJ, as you're contemplating what this looks like, I'm thinking about, from the planning board perspective, one of the things that we do is add a comment for, ask the folks who, if, you know, if there's, if a motion passes, and there were some dissenting opinions, ask the folks who had the dissenting opinions to, to elaborate, you know, on that, and to sort of, so that staff could include a line or two that captures what that looks like, and, and folks will kind of work together to, to do that. And then I think for this, I thought that might be interesting, and from the, the town council's perspective, I can't speak for Audra, I think that, that might be helpful, and she can elaborate on that. So it, it might be helpful to have sort of a summarizing sentence or two from the, from the board, from the advisory board, to include in the notes. That, that would be my proposal, but obviously, you know, welcome what other folks have to say.
Okay, all right, thanks Tina, that's, that's helpful. Audra, you, you had your hand up?
Yes, so I agree with Tina, having, you know, one or two sentence summary of kind of what the discussion was, because almost every time we get any information from the planning board where there's a split vote, you know, we're always asking, why did people dissent? Tell us more details about that. So having that information available in just a short blurb would be very valuable and helpful.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and that's something that staff could do, you know, we could add like a little summary, our couple sentences after each incentive, kind of summarizing. We were originally directed to take high-level meeting notes, not the level of town council and planning board. So it's kind of where it's where the, we, and this is a brand-new board, so we had to start somewhere, and that's, we had the baseline, but we can definitely fine-tune and make some adjustments based on this feedback, you know, going forward, and add at least a summary at the end of each action to kind of paraphrase some of that, that's, that's, that's not a problem.
Okay, I, I think that would be great, and, and yeah, it wasn't meant for us to go back to the last meeting, but, you know, going forward, I think that would be, I think that'd be good.
Okay.
So with those comments in mind, do I have a motion to accept the minutes with the one little typo correction? Oh Rhett, I'm sorry. Go ahead Rhett.
Before you do that, Phil, I'd also like to make another correction.
Okay.
It's consistently Seth's name is spelled wrong, and he probably doesn't even realize that, but I'm pretty sure it's spelled wrong for all of the things that are in the notes and for even the roll call that we just looked at. So I think we should probably correct that. Not that it's a major deal, but as a person that likes my name to be correct, I want to make that note.
I was just staring at the roll call. Didn't even see anything wrong. I have to pull it back up so I can check again.
Good, good eye Rhett.
Thank you.
Seth, are you in agreement? Or would you like to change your name to?
Could you pull back up that roll call? Yeah. Thanks Rhett. I'm IT, like IT fan.
Yeah, we will make sure. Thanks Rhett for bringing that up and we can make, we'll make that adjustment. So that's not a problem.
Okay. Any, any other, any other comments before we entertain a motion? Okay, so we'll go ahead. Any, any, anyone who would like to make a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting?
I have a question about the minutes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I joined late. For some reason in my head, I thought it was 8:30 and I just realized I was wrong.
Your apology accepted.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of things. The first thing in the minutes, I noticed it said at the top about the, we're expressing our preferences on the incentives. It said that these are not for purposes of voting on a formal policy recommendation. And then everything after that says voted yes, voted no. And I wonder if we could use something other than the word voted, since it clearly states above, it's not for the purposes of voting.
That's a, that's a reasonable point, yeah.
We can put, we can certainly put polling, you know, or something, or getting, or Housing Advisory Board feedback, something that we just, we just want to make it clear you guys weren't voting on the policy as a recommendation. It was more just to get, you know, your pulse check on the agenda item. So we could definitely make that revision, Paul.
I, I agree, but it just, it seemed confusing because then there's just the word voted like 30 times below that. The other thing is, I, I thought that on incentive number three, I thought I expressed disfavor on that one. I don't want to say the word voted, but.
Okay, well, that, that's a, that's an important correction, Paul. So incentive number three, we should correct your indication, not a vote, but an indication to, is it no or is it question mark?
I guess question mark.
Okay, okay, that's, that's a, so, so I, I have a suggestion, CJ. CJ, I have a suggestion. Can, can we just delete the word voted from all those places and just say, yes, question mark, or whatever? I, I think that might clear things up because at the top it says, we're not for the purpose of voting. But it's just, you know, what, it's, it's really the indication, it's a leaning, but I think if you just deleted the word voted, I think that might, might help the situation.
Yeah, sure, no problem. The other comment I'll make from staff is we did send the meeting minutes out about a week in advance. So we'd appreciate it. If you can give us some feedback a day or two before, rather than at this, so it doesn't take up, you know, because I know we're pressed for time, but we would appreciate that from staff too, so just.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a fair, that's a fair request.
That's why we try to do our best to send everything out a week in advance to get your guys' feedback. So just, just to that, so, but yeah, we can.
Okay, so we have a couple of corrections. We have incentive 2. We have the correct spelling of Seth's last name. And we have the correction on the vote on incentive 3 for Paul Kane. And that was a question mark rather than a yes. And we're changing, we're just deleting the word voted from, you know, for, in, in each of the incentives. Is that, did I capture all the corrections?
Yeah, I see it. Yep.
Okay, so with, with those corrections, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
So moved.
Okay, thank you Paul.
Jacob.
Jacob is seconding?
I will second, yeah.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, let's do a roll call vote and move along here. CJ, can you put up the, there we go. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go from the top this time. I vote aye. Rhett?
Aye.
Paul, sorry, Val, Valeria?
Yes.
I didn't, I, did I, oh, okay, say again please?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Paul? I didn't hear anything from Paul, I'm sorry. You're muted, Paul. Okay, Paul indicated with a thumbs up that he's an aye.
I'm in favor. I didn't know I was.
Okay, Seth?
Aye.
Jacob?
Yes.
Martha?
Aye.
Okay, and Audra and Tina are, are non-voting. So, okay, it looks like it's unanimous. So we can move on to item number 3.
Okay, so item number 3 is circling back into the discussion for the Affordable Housing Incentive Zoning Policy. Basically, from January 28th through April 7th, we've had a combination of Housing Advisory Board meetings. The surveys were published and then we've had some developer informational sessions, which brings us to today, May 5. We're having our special meeting and then there's a placeholder on the agenda, depending on how far we get today, to circle back and continue the discussion. After last meeting, staff was able to follow up with some of the other neighboring jurisdictions regarding some additional information that we didn't have at the time regarding either their policy or ordinance. And those jurisdictions included the city of Durham, Wake County, the city of Raleigh, and Town of Chapel Hill, where we took a look at what they have to offer as far as their ordinance or policy. So what we didn't have last time was the year that their policy or ordinance was adopted. So Durham's has been in place a long time, since 1998. Wake County's been in place for 16 years, since 2006. And Raleigh's the most recent one, 2021. And then the Town of Chapel Hill is a little unique. They've had an ordinance since 2000, but back in 2000, it was voluntary, not mandatory. And then in 2010, they re-adopted or re-updated it to include a mandatory ownership component to their inclusionary ordinance. So, and then that was the pending information we didn't have last time. And for this next piece of information, the Housing Advisory Board, we had most of this information last time, so not a whole lot's changed. What has changed was the column that we wanted to know, what was the top incentive that was utilized out of these ordinances and policies? So for Durham, the density bonus incentive was clearly the number one that they, they offered or they utilized. And Wake County's a density bonus. Raleigh's only got one. They only offer building height, so by default, their building height. And the Town of Chapel Hill, believe it or not, was their development fee waiver was their number one incentive that was actually utilized in their jurisdiction. So that was a good piece of information to get back. Other things that we asked for, get into a little bit more detailed analysis. I'll just do one column at a time real quick. So the minimum development unit threshold, this is how large does the development have to be before the policy kicks in? So Durham's applies to anything 15 units are greater. Wake County and Raleigh didn't have any minimum unit thresholds. Town of Chapel Hill applies five units are greater, the developments five units are greater. And then the next column, the onsite affordable percentage, Durham's got 15% onsite, minimum 15% onsite. Wake County has a unique formula. They're, they're available to any development. So any development that produces at least four affordable units, they'll give a density bonus of one market rate unit. City of Raleigh has a 20% threshold. And then the Town of Chapel Hill has a 10% onsite affordability unit percentage in their downtown district. And anything outside their downtown, they're at 15%. The housing tenure, Durham's available to both for rental and ownership, Wake County's rental and ownership. Notice that Raleigh is only for rental. They don't have, theirs is not available for ownership. And then Town of Chapel Hill's rental on a voluntary basis, but ownership on a mandatory basis. And then when you take a look at their AMI percentages, most of them just have one for each category. So Durham, if any rental housing that's produced through their ordinance, they are looking at 60% AMI for those rental units and 80% AMI for the ownership units. For Wake County, they actually go a little lower, at 50% AMI for the rental and then 80% for the ownership. Raleigh's only offering rental, so they're at 60% AMI. And then the Town of Chapel Hill, for their voluntary rental policy or ordinance, it's 60% for rentals. And then they have a sliding scale between 65 to 80% AMI for their ownership product, where they're actually asking that half of the units for ownership be at 65% AMI and then the other half at 80% AMI, so. And then last but not least, in the last column there, when you take a look at how long are these units going to be restricted for? Or what's that minimum affordability period? Durham's got 30 years across the board. Wake County's got 15 years for both rental and ownership. Raleigh's got 30 years for rental. And then the Town of Chapel Hill has 30 years for rental, but 99 years for the ownership side of the fence. So that's a little bit, some additional information that we didn't have prior. So here's some other information that we asked. I'll work on that first column there. The total policy or ordinance ownership units that have actually been built, meaning they got a final certificate of occupancy, they're actually built, someone's living in these units. So how many units have been built to date from market rate development? And these are ownership units through a policy or ordinance. So Durham has not produced one. Wake County's produced 58 to date. Raleigh's doesn't apply to ownership, so they're, they're only for rental. And then Town of Chapel Hill, since 2000, when they were in that voluntary ordinance stage, they, they cranked out 210 units, but then notice since 2010, since their policy has been mandatory, they're only producing about one unit per year or 11. So it really slowed down when they converted to an inclusionary ownership mandatory policy. The second question we asked is how many total policy or ordinance ownership units have been built from affordable housing development? So no one has, no one has produced any units through affordable. They only produce market, through market rate. Then the next part of the analysis, same question, same things, except we want to know how many rental units have been generated through a, through the policy from market rate development. That's that first column. Durham has none, Wake County has none, Raleigh has none to date. They might have some units approved or in the pipeline, but not actually constructed to date. Town of Chapel Hill, since 2000, they have gotten 67 rental units built and no one's generated any rental units through their, through affordable housing development, through their policy. So that was some additional data that staff was able to collect. We also reached out to the Wake County Public School System for some follow-up information regarding the impacts of density, how that affects school, the number of students, school enrollment. So I also had sent this out to the Housing Advisory Board, a little bit more detailed analysis that I sent to you, but I'm just going to kind of summarize. So when Wake County is looking at how many students are going to be generated per new development coming into the county, they actually use an acreage, a dwelling unit per acre model. So basically, it's a nice, easy profile model. So what we're talking about, and I'll skip over here just to show you guys, we're talking about a density bonus for us. And we're talking about cranking it up in this high-density zoning condition to at least 16 dwelling units per acre, right? So that, so let's just take that model, for example, because we want to know what would be the impacts of that. So if you take a look at 16 to 16 dwelling units per acre, 16 to 20 dwelling units per acre, we would fall right in there. We'd fall under their very high residential profile. If you then further, they provided a table to say, okay, well, that's only half of the information. The other half is what would that density do? How many students would be generated per developed residential acre? So if we go back and we're in this 16 to 20 dwelling units per acre, for example, or this very high residential VH, we simply go to the VH column. And so for every developed residential acre, we'd be generating about five students. So if we approved a 10-acre development, for example, we're looking at 50 to 56 students. You know, depending on, even if they're in that urban high, which is 20 to 40 dwelling units per acre. So you're looking at about five students per developed residential acre in our highest density zoning district. So hopefully that helps, you know, kind of paint the picture of how many new students are getting, they would be accounting for based on the development density. So in Apex, and this is specifically for Apex. Notice that they, I also asked them to include Wake County. So, and Wake County, for every developed residential acre outside of like, you know, 3.3 students in that very high-density zoning district that they use on their model. So, so I just wanted to share that, get some additional background information, because we didn't have that last time and the Housing Advisory Board was asking for a little bit more information. So with that said, I'll circle it back to Chair Welch to go ahead and conduct the next part of the presentation. So that was staff's update. I think you're on mute, Chair Welch.
Thank you. I'm trying to stay on mute while you're talking, so I don't interfere. Thank you. Thank you CJ. So I think the intent now is to go through the first five or so incentives that we went through and didn't vote on, but we did give some indication of our leanings and go back and with that additional information, see whether that changes our opinions on those particular incentives. So this is, this is the high, first one is a higher-density zoning district. And you can read that. And is there any discussion before we go back through and confirm whether our initial indication is correct? Or you want to stay with it? Or whether like question marks can be replaced with a yes or a no? Any, any discussion before we go through and do that?
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead Paul.
I, I recall that when we were talking about this in our last meeting, there was some lack of clarity on what yes or no meant in terms of, are we saying that we think this is a good incentive or an effective incentive? Or are we saying that this is, this should become policy? I, I think yes or no are such absolute terms that if we don't really know what the question is, it's hard to give an accurate answer.
Okay, all right. That's a, that's a fair, that's a fair request. CJ, would you like to, to answer that?
It'd basically be on effectiveness, you know, with a developer, market rate or affordable housing developer, do we feel that they would be able to come in and utilize any of these incentives that would actually produce affordable housing? Do we think that they would take advantage of any, any of these incentives that would generate affordable housing? So it's based on effectiveness.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay. So, so basically, and I, I would say that we're voting on individual incentives. So what we're really trying to define here, I think by some sort of consensus, is what should be in the menu of incentives that's presented to prospective developers for Apex? Is that, is that a fair statement, CJ?
Yep, that's also, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, so I'm going to start at the bottom again and ask Tina, Tina, you had said yes? Or you, there was some uncertainty? Do you still want to leave the question mark? Or does the research that CJ just presented, does that make you want to lean one way or the other?
I would lean towards yes.
Okay. And can, can we?
So we'll take that, I said, we'll take the question mark off.
Okay, great. Okay.
We're trying to get some style, so we'll take the question mark off.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Audra, how about you?
Same here. Take the question mark off. I'm a yes.
Okay, very good. Molly, are you still okay with your yes?
I'm still a yes.
Okay, very good. Jacob, do you have any leanings one way or the other?
Yes, I guess. I mean, I'm all for, you know, news density bonuses, so yeah.
Okay, so we can change your question mark to a yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Seth?
So based on what Christopher just said, that this is a yes or no on whether it should be on the menu, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And so to me, and, and you know, based on the research that he just showed, really, there's no like one effective answer, right? That everyone's utilizing. And so should they all be on the menu, right? And that's my question. Like, yes, the menu. Like, I'm yes to the menu, but should it be that these are all on the menu with a, like, you know, like, you can, you can't combine coupons? Like, you can only use one of these. I don't know. But I think the, the menu, you know, has to be robust. So if this is, if it should be on the menu, I say yes.
Yeah, and that is correct Seth. And I'm glad you re-brought that up because the menu is all 10 of these. So once again, if the developer comes in and their profile of their development can utilize up to all ten. Then they can select all ten, for example, so yeah. So and I think Paul had made a comment last about Housing Advisory Board meeting, maybe even. Saying, hey, maybe one of these incentives alone on their own merit may not be enough, you know? So you're absolutely right, that's why staff, when staff helped draft these incentives, we knew that we needed to provide a menu. So this would be one of ten in that menu, so yeah, and I'm glad that you re-brought that up again, so.
Okay, so Seth, you're comfortable in changing? Your question mark to a yes, I presume?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, very good. Paul?
I might make a suggestion that maybe can help speed things up, because it's suddenly starting to feel like we're just repeating the last meeting. In terms of going through the list and saying yes or no.
Okay.
I think that. I'm frankly not going to say no to anything that can help development. And I'm not going to say no to anything that's going to be. You know, an incentive for anything, really. And so it feels like I. Going through each one of these and going, getting a roll call of everybody seems like, again, we're just kind of repeating. I would recommend maybe we say, is there any of these anybody thinks shouldn't be on there? Frankly, I mean, I don't see a reason to take away an incentive. It may or may not work, but I don't see any reason to take any of them away. Maybe if we could just all agree that all of these are worthy of keeping on the menu, as Seth says. Maybe we can allocate some time to maybe getting into some of the manual documents and some of the bigger picture policy discussions.
Okay, I'm not sure we're going to make it to that, that's a wonderful aspiration, but. So I think this particular incentive, the voting was. There was more of a range, let me say. So I think we can go more quickly through the other incentives, so let's just, let's see if we can make progress that way, okay?
All right.
I agree with you, you know, we need to move through here quickly. Okay, so there's been a slight change to the description instead of number two. And go ahead to the roll call chart. Okay, so the only thing there is that Seth didn't have a chance to vote on that one, so. Seth?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
You're good with it, okay, so you can change to a yes, okay, let's move on to the next incentive. Unless there's anyone that wants to change their indication, I think we're all okay with that. Okay, so number three. That description did not change. That's to increase the height, the maximum building height. Paul, looks like you're the only question mark there.
Yeah, you can change that to a yes.
To a yes, okay, very good. Assuming everyone else is okay with their yeses, we can move on to number four. That's the reduced building setbacks, that was, the description was not changed. Okay, and I think you can eliminate the question mark. On my. Polling result there, okay? Okay, and so we can move on to five, which was reduced lot width. And there, Seth, you, there was a question mark by your yes, or would you like to change that?
Yeah, I mean, you can take that question mark on or off.
Okay.
It's meant to be there.
Okay, so I think we're, did we go over the RCA reduction?
Yeah, so everybody except Tina, Tina had to leave early, as you may recall, at the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We want to make sure we give her a chance to vote, she was the only one that didn't get a chance to vote on this last time, so.
Right, okay, okay. Tina, have you joined us from your mobile device?
I am, I'm in carpool line.
Okay.
Real life is real. Can you pull it back up? Thank you too, real, can you pull it, thank you.
No problem.
I will be a yes on that.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the one where we have not, this is where we left off, basically, last meeting, Phil, just to let you know.
Okay, and so there was, it looks like there was a change to, well, let me just read it with the change. A reduction in the required amount of parking may be considered for developments that are pedestrian-oriented. Mixed use and/or within a half mile of an existing or planned bus stop. This incentive is applicable in any conditional zoning district without the need to rezone to a PUD conditional zoning district. Planning a development, so.
And staff had made the change to a half mile, we had sent out the developer surveys, as you recall, and we had got some feedback that. In those surveys that they'd like to extend the radius, so we went back and made that change, so.
Okay.
Just to let you know, so.
I think that's reasonable. Any discussion on this particular incentive? Tina?
Yeah, I'm, I hear that Chair Welch, you might think that's reasonable, I would like to hear a little bit more.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not actually sure that that's reasonable. So I'd like to hear a little bit more. I do agree with the quarter mile, so I'd like to hear a little bit more about the reason for the change for a half mile.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I mean, I can sort of see that, you know, for seniors, maybe a half mile is more difficult than a quarter mile, so. I think that, CJ, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, quarter mile is, I mean, obviously, that's a good benchmark, that's, you know, when we look at tax credit projects. And we look at other walkability scores, a quarter mile's typically the threshold. However, when we went back and we looked at what percentage of developments would actually not be tax credit projects? They'd be more based off of market rate development. Then the quarter mile threshold, when we looked at that, didn't really apply as much. We anticipate that the majority of the developers that will take advantage of these incentives will be market rate developers. Versus a hundred percent affordable housing developers, and so when we had the survey sent out, they had asked for a little bit more. Of that radius, so that was some of the justification for considering going to a half mile.
Okay, so in a sense.
I would.
Go ahead, go ahead, Tina.
So I, yeah, so I would lean towards, I mean, you know, sort of in the scale of what's our purpose in adding to the menu. I think that walkability score is incredibly important, if not actually paramount. If this is going to be an incentive that we're going to offer. If it doesn't actually help improve the walkability, I'm not sure that I'm interested in offering it as an incentive. You know, I think if we're offering an incentive, it needs to do both. It needs to speak to the incentive that we're trying to offer. So, you know, increase the affordable housing, but it also needs to speak to. The, you know, in offering a level of walkability, it needs to kind of meet that standard as well. So as written, I would be a flat no. I would be a yes with a quarter mile, I would be a flat no with a half mile.
Okay, all right. Let me just make a couple of comments. Number one is that when you double the radius, I guess that is. You really affect the area much more than doubling. You probably at least triple or quadruple, I mean, it's quite significant. So it means that there's a much broader, wider area that developers can develop in to get that particular incentive. That's number one. Number two is that, just as CJ said, with tax credit projects. There's always going to be a combination of tax credit projects and these incentives for market rate developers. So I see them being somewhat complementary. I don't see the necessity for both of them being, having the same. You know, radius for pedestrian access. So that's just, those are just my thoughts, but you're certainly more than welcome to change your vote to a no.
The other thing too that staff can inject is if we do get a hundred percent affordable housing tax credit project, they're not going to use the half mile. They're going to go back down to the quarter mile, because they have to score on their qualified allocation plan. And meet that threshold anyhow, so. This is really driven to assist more on what we heard from the market rate developers wanting to see, so just to let you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good point.
Okay, I will, I will add here that, again, for me, the incentive to drive a market rate incentive. For something that does not actually improve marketability would not be a valid reason to include an incentive, so my vote still stands at no.
Okay, all right, so. So, okay, so we actually didn't, we actually didn't poll on this particular incentive. So we can go through and we will start with Tina putting a no. Audra, would you like to indicate your leaning on this?
I kind of agree with Tina here, mainly because we know with a PUD. That sidewalks are required on both sides. If it's not a PUD, and it's only a CZ, then that is not required. So that is a concern of mine on the walkability piece of this. If you're not requiring parking. To the full extent within half a mile, then you've got. Half a mile of walking on not sidewalk. That, I understand what Tina's saying here, that that would be a concern in walkability.
Okay, that's a good point, and so. So the PUD is not required to have a sidewalk even on one side of the street, and?
No, no, the PUD is required, but this says you don't need to rezone to a PUD.
Oh, okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
To get this.
Got you, got you.
That's my concern here.
Okay. CJ, do you have a possible solution to that dilemma?
Yeah, I mean, the original staff recommendation was a quarter mile. Councilmember Killingsworth, I know Tina had mentioned that if we trimmed it back down to the original, a quarter mile. Would you be in support of this condition if we trimmed it back down to the quarter mile, like we originally had it?
I would be more willing to consider it, because that's less sidewalk gaps that we're talking about.
Okay, because that could be a possibility, Phil, we could go back and just strike through and put it back to a quarter mile.
Yeah. Well, let's finish going through here, and if it looks like there are a lot of noses and question marks, we might. You know, and it's fair to ask that question as we go through. Molly, do you have a preference, one way or the other?
I have, I guess, first a question, is it's this parking reduction, well, from what to what? Like, what would it be if we didn't have the reduction? And how much is parking being reduced?
Yeah, CJ, do you want to respond to that? I don't know that that's been thought out, but maybe staff has already figured that out.
Yeah, I'll turn that one over to Diane, who I think's on the call here, and maybe she can inject on that a little bit more.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
It's a reduction in parking, in the required amount of parking for the development. What?
Yep.
What would it be if we didn't reduce it, and what is it being reduced to? Like, is it so many spaces per unit? I would assume.
Yeah, well, so. The standard that's in the ordinance is it's so many spaces per unit, but in almost every rezoning, there's a proposal based on the number of bedrooms. Different spaces per type of unit, and so this just. Basically is providing something we're already doing, but using it as one of the incentives. We're already doing this. And it's on a case-by-case basis, depending on, you know, what's nearby, what the likelihood is of. Problems with adjoining streets or adjoining land uses. We wouldn't do a reduction for somebody that had no opportunity to, you know, have alternate means of transportation. So it really would be on a case-by-case basis, and I'm not sure. Where the half mile versus quarter mile came from, it may have come from our transit staff. CJ, I'm not sure why that was changed, but I agree, the quarter mile is always going to tie to the. Affordable housing developers, the nonprofit developers, and it probably won't be used as much. By the market rate, just because that's not where the land is for the market rate.
Okay.
Yeah, and this came from the developer surveys that we, some of what they were asking for, so just to clarify for everybody that. That's what they're asking for.
Okay, so let me make a suggestion, why don't we go back to the quarter mile? And repoll and see if that is going to make a difference?
And I'll say yes, I support the quarter mile.
Okay. Okay, so Molly is a yes. Audra, it didn't sound like you were, would you change to a yes, or would that be a question mark at this point?
I'm going to say question mark right this minute.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Still thinking about that.
And Tina, what about you?
I would be a yes with a question mark, I appreciate Audra's bringing up the point about the sidewalks. Although to balance that, it doesn't sound like that will be as much of an issue because of connectivity. So I'd like to have a better understanding around that, but I feel like that's fairly minor question from my perspective, so I would be a yes. My main concern was the change in the quarter to a half mile, so I would be a yes with a very tiny question mark.
Okay, can you change the font size, CJ? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Okay, I'm going to move on to Jacob. Are you, what's your leaning on this one?
Yes.
Okay, Jacob is a yes. How about Seth?
I'm a yes.
Seth is a yes with a corrected name change there?
Yeah.
Paul?
So we're voting on putting it back to the quarter instead of the half now, is that what we're saying?
No, we're voting on this incentive with it at a quarter. And not, we already changed it back to a quarter.
Okay, I guess, you know, the purpose of the. Survey of the developers was to ask them what would be an incentive, because this is supposed to be an incentive-based approach. They told us, and the town made an adjustment based on that to try to make it an enticing incentive. So I was prepared to vote yes, because we were being responsive to the survey. I'm not excited about kind of ignoring that, so I'm going to say no.
Okay, all right, so Paul is a no. Val?
Well, here I was trying to calculate, trying to find a source to see how long it would take to walk, a quarter versus half a mile. So what I found this source is a five-minute walk versus a ten-minute walk.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
I think ten minutes for somebody who is maybe has some health issues, or. I don't, I think it's a little much, but yeah, I do think it's a conundrum, because. If this is not enough for an incentive, yet. Walkability seems so fundamental to affordable housing, because you might have many individuals who don't have a car. So it seems that, you know, may have one vehicle per household, as opposed to everybody have their own car. So my, I think I'm leaning towards no, because it seems like it would undermine other goals. Of, like, if the affordable housing creates problems for the people who want to bring to the affordable housing. We might be able to get the developer to develop the unit, but we might not get the people there that we want to get. So I'm. I don't know, it just might be that the, from my very, very, very slim understanding of this topic. I just feel like the goals might be in conflict with this particular incentive.
Okay.
Leaning towards no.
Okay, so I would go back to what Diane said, that, you know, this is kind of done. On a case-by-case basis, and that kind of emphasizes the fact that this is just one of, you know, I guess, ten different incentives. In the menu, and so it's really a question of. Whether this will be an effective incentive for. Any of the market rate developers to include in their portfolio, if you will, of incentives, so. But that's okay, your no is a, you know, a good solid no is okay. Rhett, we're up to you.
Yeah, so I think I'm with Paul on this for some of the logic, and that is, you know, we did ask specifically. The development community, both non, both market rate and non-market rate. both non, both market rate and non-market rate sort of developers. And that was sort of their request or, you know, their information that they provided. So, you know, I think the half mile I would say yes to. I also want to say that as a person that does transit planning, a half mile is, you know, is something that we standardly use. You know, quarter to half mile is not uncommon. And given the land availability, especially around transit stops and those other things, I think I would say no.
Okay, okay. So let's see, at this point, we have one, two, three solid yeses, three solid nos, a question mark and a yes with a question mark.
And so, sorry, I hate to interrupt here.
That's okay.
As you're talking, but I actually have a question, and I mean no disrespect by this at all. So I'm wondering in this, I'm trying to figure out what the term voting member versus non-voting member means, right? So we're having these discussions. And Audra and Tina, I believe, are non-voting members. So I'm just trying to understand what that means in the conversation. I think their input is invaluable, right? They're offering fantastic inputs. However, I'm not sure that they officially get a vote. And I'm bringing this up as the vice chair, so.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to bring that so that we're all on board. And again, I don't mean it in any disrespectful way.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, the goal here is to capture everybody's feedback. You're absolutely correct, Rhett, that when we come and bring this before the Housing Advisory Board for a formal policy recommendation that Tina and Audra unfortunately will be, they won't be able to vote on it. But it's so important to get their feedback because they are part of our board. And, you know, this will come before Councilmember Killingsworth anyhow. When it's all said and done before the town council, then she'll be voting there. So she actually will get the final vote. But nevertheless, for purposes of the Housing Advisory Board, this is simply to get everybody's feedback. And then when we bring it back before the Housing Advisory Board, hopefully in the near future for a formal policy recommendation to town council. Unfortunately, Tina and Audra won't be able to vote for that part, so.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was trying to get clarification on. It's like, what are we actually, like, what is the process? Are we going to at some point formally vote on each one of these incentives for inclusion in the policy? So does that mean they do or don't get a vote? Or that sort of is really confusing to me.
Yeah, that's a fair question, Rhett. I appreciate you bringing that up. So I have a suggestion. Since Diane said that, you know, there is obviously some negotiation with each of the developers on things like this. And that the reduction in the parking requirements is really up to the judgment of the staff in some manner. I wonder whether we can make it a range to say a quarter mile to a half mile. And so that if someone is in, is greater than a quarter mile but less than a half mile, then it becomes a negotiable item. Does that, CJ?
I mean, if you have within a half a mile, I mean, that's anything quarter, you know, zero to a quarter. I mean, that's.
That's true.
I mean, you're giving, then you're kind of hedging the developers to say, oh, if it's only within a quarter to a half. By saying within, it's zero to whatever that number is.
That's true.
So you're kind of handcuffing it from that point. So my recommendation would be just to have a up to or within, just within.
Okay, so let me ask the question this way. If we, hold on just a second, Tina. I see your hand up. If we change it back to a half mile, how many of the no votes would go to yes votes? And how many of the yes votes would go to no? I think Tina would probably go back to no. I don't think Audra's.
But before you, I think before you ask that question, I think one of the things I want to sort of lift up as the conversation has continued is that I do hear and want to utilize the survey with the developers that we had as a part of the guiding discussion. So I appreciate that, you know, staff did utilize that and change it based on that. And simultaneously, I want to recognize that what in our previous discussion, what developers said and then what actually has happened in real time in the last, again, I don't want to rely too much on my memory in the last two years, but at least in the last six months, it was a little in opposition to what the survey said. So like, you know, what we're asking in theory doesn't always translate to what actually is coming before the planning board and the town council. And I'm specifically remembering our conversation last time on building hype. So I want to hear and honor that conversation and the questions. But I do think, you know, again, we need to look at the community at large and say, you know, it might be that this is never an incentive that is utilized by the developers. And so then we, you know, we go back and, you know, that's what we can go back and change the UDO for and adopt and say this, you know, this was not working as intended. However, I do have concerns that as a community that we would lessen our standards for what is considered and promoting walkability and supporting those who might have a disability or are elderly who again are limited in their ability to be able to walk 10 minutes. I think that's critically important. And for those who think that that is not a burden, I ask you to step into some of our other cities and talk to our other communities and talk to folks who are having to, you know, walk both of these ways to and from jobs, to and from doctor's appointments, to and from, you know, taking care of their children. And think of it in those realms. I want to make sure that we stick within what a community considers walkable, not what the developers consider walkable.
Okay.
And I realize, realize that those might be.
Tina, Tina, I'm sorry, I'm going to. Tina, Tina, I'm going to cut you off because we really need to move along here. We only have about a half hour left here and we've only confirmed the first six. We, I'm sorry, we really need, I get your point completely. I respect it, but I need to move things along. So CJ, if you could go to the roll call that we've done so far. Okay, so Tina, just to wrap up here, I assume that if we change it back to a half mile, your vote is going to be not vote. Your indication, your leaning is going to be a no. Is that correct?
Chair Walsh, I think I just asked for the ease of conversation that we stick with what's on the, what is written. Because I think if you would have started there, we wouldn't have gone down this entire, we would have had a conversation, we would have had yes or no votes. So as written with the half mile, my vote is a no.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, back to the roll call. No, that's for six, you need to go forward one. There we go, okay. So, okay, so let's look at the nos. Paul, Val and Rhett, if we went to a half mile, would your nos change to yeses?
I'm still a no.
Okay, and that was Val, right? Okay, and Paul?
Mine would change to yes.
Okay, so that would be one change to a yes. And what about Rhett?
Mine would be a yes at half mile.
Okay, okay. So what I'm seeing is that there would be more consensus. We would pick up two yeses, we would lose Tina, regrettably.
Phil, this is Molly, you would lose my yes vote too. If we went to half mile, I would be a no.
Oh, okay, all right. So then it doesn't really make any difference whether it's a quarter mile or a half mile. Okay. All right, so that that means that I unfortunately have to, and I'm torn, honestly. So I'm going to put my leaning in as a question mark. And we're going to have to come back to this at some point. So let's move on to incentive number eight. Maybe we can, maybe it's easier to reach consensus on this one. This actually gets to exactly what Augur was talking about, the sidewalk reductions. And let me just read through this because this is, we're going back over this. In the rural context area, the town may choose to waive the requirement in section 2.3.4. F.1. Point AI IV of the UDO requiring construction of sidewalks on both sides of residential streets. In these cases, sidewalks must be provided on at least one side of all residential streets. The section of the UDO requiring pedestrian facilities on both sides of all collector streets and thoroughfares would not be waived. So this is just within, within the neighborhoods, I guess. So CJ, do you have any other?
We actually have, yeah, we actually have Shannon on the line here to maybe help inject a little bit more.
Okay.
Yes, sure, good morning, everyone. I'm going to just share a map real quick because you see in the description that there's a reference to the rural context area. So this is actually a very small portion of Apex's total planning area that would be eligible for this particular incentive. What I'm showing is our adopted context areas map. And this green area is what we refer to as the rural context. So it's the far west, western portion of our planning area. This is US1 for reference and New Hill Olive Chapel Road here, kind of following along Humie Olive and going around the Jordan game, New Hope gamelands. So what this incentive responds to is some feedback that we've received over time from developers that in this more rural area, where there's a planned unit development, it doesn't necessarily fit the context to have to provide sidewalks on both sides of residential streets. They're always going to be required on your collector streets, your thoroughfares, where you have more traffic. And we want to be certain that we can provide pedestrian facilities on both sides. So this responds to that, that feedback that we've received. Sidewalks would still be required on one side of the residential street, just not both. So that's just a little bit of detail for you to consider. And I'll turn it back to you, Phil.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. I see that Audra has her hand up.
I just want to go ahead and give my feedback on this one. I honestly, I'm okay with that. In a rural context, making sure that sidewalks are at least on one side of the residential inside the development, I'm okay with that. And this is basically saying that any of the main streets and thoroughfares and things like that, sidewalks are going to be required on both sides anyway. So I'm good with this one.
Okay, any other comments on this? CJ, did we get any feedback from the developers from their surveys in terms of whether they saw this as being an effective incentive?
Yeah, we got some positive feedback on this. A couple of comments said this would be a nominal impact, but they did support it. It was the majority, so.
So it might be a part of a, you know, a collection of incentives that they would see as being effective?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. So with that, with that feedback, I'm going to start with, well, I won't start with myself because that's unfair. I'm going to start with Rhett. Rhett, do you have a leaning one way or the other on this sidewalk reduction incentive?
Yeah, I'd be a yes.
Okay. Val, what about you?
A yes as well, in a rural context, I think this is fine.
Okay, good. Paul?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay, that's a yes. Seth?
Yep.
Okay, that is a yes for Seth. Jacob?
Yes.
Okay. Molly?
Yes.
Okay. Tina?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm also going to say yes. So I think that this was, after a hard one, this was relatively easy. So that's great, thank you. Okay, let's move on to number nine. Okay, I think this is one that was relatively popular, but there was a question about whether we needed to require 50% affordable units. And so that's, CJ, why don't you explain why you changed that 50% to a 20%? CJ, you may be on mute.
Let's take a, okay, yeah, so this is the, for expedited processing of rezoning site plan and master subdivision plan applications, where at least 20% of the residential units or lots are set aside for affordable housing. We went back, of course, once again, we heard back from the development community that the 50% threshold was very high. And the market rate developers felt like basically we're going to have to be affordable housing developers in order to get this incentive with some of the comments. So we also trimmed it down to 20% to match the general statute, which is for the next one here, which we'll get into, to where at least 20% of the residential units must be set aside for low income households. So when we went back, we also had to consider staffing capacity, right? Because when you put an application in a fast track, everybody has to be on the same page and you have to have that capacity. So we felt 20% was still high enough that that's a very hard number to hit if you're a market rate developer to be providing 20% set aside, affordable units. So we felt that it was a balance between capacity and also getting closer to the general statute. So that was the reasoning behind that.
Okay, okay, that's good. So what I'd like to do in this case is start with our developer representatives, if you will. So if we could go to this, why don't we start with Rhett? And what, do you have a leaning on this one with the change to 20% affordable units?
I think I would say yes, given, I was actually going to ask the staffing question. That was one of my questions. I think I would say yes on this.
Okay, okay. And Paul, what's your feeling?
I think this is much better. I still think at 20%, we're not going to be looking at big staffing issues. 20% is an enormous take, especially on when you're building for ownership. I think you're getting very, very few takers on this, so I think staffing won't be an issue. I think you could take it even lower and it wouldn't be an issue. So I guess I would give it a yes with a question mark. I think it's an improvement, but I question whether it would truly incentivize.
Okay, okay, that's a fair comment. Actually, that brings up a question for CJ. Would this apply only to developers of owner occupied units? Or would this also apply to developers of rental units?
This will apply to developers of both ownership and rental.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Seth, what about you?
I say yes.
Okay. And Jacob?
This is something that we talked about extensively in the Wake County Affordable Housing Steering Committee. And I think we talked about it even further. But of course, Wake County, a lot of their housing plan is more suggestions for the municipalities. And if you talk to any of the county commissioners, they'll mention stuff like, items like this as well, even for higher AMI and in lower percentage, you know, less than 20% even. This is looking at, I'm glad we at least changed it from 50 to 20. I kind of share Paul's thoughts. But I also agree that it could be a little lower. But at least it's in the right direction. So yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, so is that a solid yes?
Yes.
Okay, and you might want to change the yes under my name to a yes beside Rhett's name? Okay, so now I'd like to hear from. So now I'd like to hear from Tina. What what is your feeling on this?
I'm a yes. The only questions I have, first of all, thank you CJ for the context. I'm glad I feel like we found a middle ground. I hear that folks would like us to go lower, but I feel like this is a good middle starting ground and appreciate the additional context. I'm wondering what expedited means? And I don't know if there's a way to quantify that. To give an idea of what what the timeframe would look like. Yeah.
This is Diane. So essentially with our technical review committee, they are absolutely slammed. They have more projects under review than at any time in the past. And I've been with the town 23 years. It used to be that a very heavy month would occur once a year and it would be in the 25 to 28 project range. That's a normal month now.
Wow.
It's not going to be more than a one month expedited processing. There's not any capacity to to do that. Now, we have already done that for the 100% affordable housing projects. Where we've done, you know, basically got things done a month earlier than those schedule. But and so that's actually why the 50% was set so high because there's not a lot of capacity for this. So I'm not sure 20% honestly is a reasonable number.
Okay, well, I guess the more general question Diane is whether this is a reasonable incentive?
Well, when we first started talking about this, it was, but as of May 2022, it's probably not really reasonable anymore. It's I can't even express to you how busy these folks are. And a lot of departments only have one or two people reviewing these plans.
Okay, and and is I mean, are the the groups fully staffed? Or are there vacancies that where this is just a temporary situation?
No, this is not about staffing. This is and they've requested more staff and we're getting we're getting a large number of new staff this coming fiscal year, but it's just. Yeah, it's pretty impossible to keep up. So anyway, staff is supportive of the 50% residential units are set aside for affordable housing. I wouldn't, I think 20 is too low.
Diane, I I appreciate that additional context. I I had a feeling that things were that high.
I so I want to be clear, I'm supportive. But I I think Diane, again, thank you for that additional context because I think that's going to be important for council. Because we're bringing on new staff, but the reality is the developers are telling us that 20% might be a little high. And so if we just see a slight increase, that may mean additional staff is needed to meet expedited. And I so I just wanna like, I feel like that's a worthwhile investment, but I do want to raise that as a as a significant a significant concern that I just, you know, want as this moves to town council, you know, moves before this board and the town council for further, you know, for full consideration, that this might, you know, this might mean additional staff capacity is needed to meet this requirement.
Okay, all right, that's that's fair enough. So I'm wondering, you know, under expedited processing, under that incentive column, it says nonfinancial, but what I'm hearing is there probably will be some financial impact if additional staff is required in order to.
It will. It's nonfinancial for the developer.
Yes, yeah, but it sounds like it does have a financial impact for the town. Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Yeah, and I I agree with Tina. I'm a yes with that caveat of making sure that that explanation is brought up when it is brought before the board.
Before the council, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, all right. So, all right, so we have yes for Tina, yes for Audra. Molly?
I'll be a yes on that one.
Okay, Val?
Yes, if it's possible.
Good point.
And this and then it can all be done. That's 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 a lot of problem. That's just trouble. Yes, if it's possible.
Okay, and I don't know who's keeping track of the polling results, but I think we can put in yeses for Tina and Audra. So and and I'm a yes as well. But I think that staff may need to do a little looking into because I I think the thing we don't want to do is give expedited processing for a subset of the developers and really annoy the whole majority of the rest of developers because you know, you're not able to meet reasonable timeframes for processing you know, their requests, their development requests. So 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 we're yes on this one, but I think CJ, I think you might want to take a look at whether this is a, you know, whether this is an implementable incentive. Right?
Yes, I mean, we we could certainly remove it as well, you know, or raise that percentage back up to our original recommendation of 50%, you know.
But then it wouldn't it wouldn't appeal to the developers. So I, yeah.
Yeah. So the housing advisory. Go ahead, Tina, I'm sorry.
I might argue it's implementable. I might argue it's implementable. And it might be an incentive for market rate developers say, oh, wait, I'm I, you know, don't want to wait any longer. You know, let's see if we can reconfigure to to to, you know, to meet this requirement. But what expedited looks like, you know, April of 2022 is might look different. You know, in December of 2022, you know, that that that's why it is not quantified, right? It might look different. So I just I don't think it is not implementable as much as things are going to look different. And that's part of the, you know, part of the intent of the policy.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Tina. I see Seth has his hand up.
Yeah. Couple questions. I guess first, what's to prevent if we do decide on this and put this on the menu, what's to prevent a developer for putting together a master subdivision plan with 20% to get rezoned and then going back after the rezoning takes place? Right? Because when we rezone, it's there's no guarantee that's the project we'll end up with.
Actually, the conditional zoning process is law. So once it's approved, they have to meet that or they have to go back through the whole process again to have that condition removed.
Okay, good to know. And then following up with that is, you know, again, if this is just a menu and, you know, we don't think will be a huge incentive for everybody, why not keep it to see if it's incentive for anybody? You know, because no one uses it, no one uses it.
So so Seth, I guess you're asking it, you know, is this really an effective incentive? Because that's part of what we're voting on here.
No, no, I mean, we're voting on to put it on the menu.
Yeah, but to put it on the menu, wouldn't you wouldn't you agree that it would it would be helpful if it was effective as an incentive?
Not necessarily, right? So if it's an effective for one person or one developer out of 10, then we just created more affordable units because we made it incentive to somebody. Doesn't that need to be a majority? incentivizing. And so that's why, you know, like there's, you know, there's you know, raw squid on the menu at places. Most people aren't gonna order it, but one people is gonna, one person is gonna like it and go back for that. So all we need to do is have that one person.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, there was one other person with a hand up, but I cannot see who it is, so they'll have to identify themselves.
Yeah, Paul.
Paul, okay.
I guess the question I have is, and this is really the first incentive we've talked about where town staff capacity became such an important consideration. I think up to this point, it was really, is this something that's going to be adequately incentivizing? I have to believe that if this resulted in a huge run on taking advantage of this incentive and that town staff capacities were overburdened, is couldn't couldn't the town council members say, you know, we can't offer this right now because of capacity issues? Is the town obligated to offer it? Or is it something that's part of the negotiating process?
I mean, I don't.
I would think it would be part of an ongoing negotiation process.
Well, then why not leave it in? And if it can't, if it doesn't work, then the town can say this this didn't work. It's part of that negotiation. If if we're worried that we're obligating the town to do something it doesn't have capacity for, I think that's valid. But but if it's something that can be negotiated, why not leave it in as a as a tool in the toolbox?
Yeah, to clarify, these 10 incentives have to be applied for, right? They're not automatically being approved. If you go back and reread the manuals, this is the developer can request up to 10 incentives. They still have to be reviewed and approved, you know, by talent council. Staff still has to get vetted, vet vet through your application. So it's not like you're guaranteed anything, you know. We're just saying that this is a menu of options that you can apply for. That's what we see.
I'm gonna take one more comment from Rhett and then we're gonna see if we can move to incentive number 10.
Yeah, I drew a blank on what I was actually gonna say. So Paul, Paul mentioned the the staffing piece, which I think is a huge concern and and that town council could, you know, make adjustments, which I also agree with. It also would be since this is specifically for affordable housing, I would think that staff might also, sorry, that council might also redirect and say, because this is for affordable housing, we prefer that your focus be on these these, you know, reviews instead of just a market rate. Now, that might not sit well with Paul. I get that. But I just wanted to bring it up that there are options, right, for, I would think, for council to direct staff to focus on the the units that are at least some affordable housing related. So I wanted to say that. The the other question I or the other comment I think I had was, yeah, because this is a menu, I, after reading the actual incentive policy itself and knowing that individuals have to apply for each one of these things, I think it's going to be burdensome. And I think you're going to not have folks doing it because it's not worth their time and effort. So I just wanted to point that out. For, you know, 5% donation to the affordable housing, I think with the the layers, at least the way I read them, which we can obviously discuss that when we get there, it seems to be that it's going to be a burden on any developer, not just market rate, to actually apply for these things. So.
Okay, okay, all right, that's fair. Okay, so why don't we move ahead to the, I think we have an incentive number 10. Am I correct? There we go. Yeah. So I will read the description here and then ask CJ if he has any any clarification or any additional information. This is under the the title of loans, grants and fee reimbursement. So this is the financial part of the incentive. It says may may reimburse or provide a grant for certain development fees, may provide a loan or grant to create a greater percentage of affordable units or lots, increase the length of affordability period or deeper affordability. At least 20% of the residential units must be set aside as affordable units to low income households up to 60% of the area median income. CJ, any any other details that you want to add to that?
Yeah, that's why to date, because the general statute's 157.3 and 157.94. If the town were to utilize, for example, our affordable housing fund to put any type of money in a market rate or affordable housing project, whether it be a penny or a million dollars, the 20% at 60% rule is required. And that's why to date, we've only put money in our 100% affordable housing projects like Broadstone Walk and Abbey Spring, Cassana Lane, because they were able to meet this type of thresholds. It can be very difficult to provide financial assistance to market rate developers or any developer because they would have the first 20% of the units have to be 60% AMI, whether that be ownership or rental development. And so that's a very hard threshold to accomplish if you're a developer, you know, unless you're doing maybe affordable housing. So that's the statute. So there's not, can't really get out of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So there's a legal requirement here. So then the question becomes, and I think maybe I'll do the same thing I did last time, is start with developer representatives and and see if they think that the with, I mean, it's it's the same 20%. But it's now even more restrictive because it's 60% of AMI or or below. So so Rhett, what's your take on on this? Is this, should this be included in the menu of incentives?
I mean, again, I think it should be included in the menu for sure. Whether it gets utilized is another story, but I definitely think putting it in the menu is something that we should definitely do.
Okay. All right, Paul, do you have an opinion?
I agree with Rhett. I think it's we should leave it in there. I question whether it'll ever get used.
Yeah, okay, that's very good. Seth?
Same, sorry.
You're thinking. I can see smoke coming out of your ears. Did you say yes or no? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. And Jacob?
Yes.
Okay. And go back to Audra?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Tina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
Yes.
All right. Val?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes as well. Okay, so that takes us up to 9:42 by my clock here. CJ, you wanted to allow at least maybe 10 minutes or so to, I think it's pretty clear at this point that we're gonna need to have another special meeting here. Do you do you want to at least get into the proposed applicability standards? Give us a preview of that and then maybe we can discuss when we meet again.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I think that would be good. So what would be coming up on the menu for next meeting, and I think Paul had said last meeting, hey, when are we gonna get to the rest of the the policy stuff, right? That's in the manual. So this would be we'd be asking the housing advisory board for feedback on our minimum development unit threshold, you know, how how large should the development be before onsite units are going to be recommended? We're gonna, I'm gonna give you guys some examples of other jurisdictions and then you can do a polling, the feedback on that. Also, the onsite percentages, we're gonna need to start talking about that. Right now, the the recommendation is for 5% onsite. I'll give you some examples of some other jurisdictions and then you could do the polling, the rental AMI percentages. We're gonna go through that, take a look at where where those are at and give you some more data, show you what's going on in the neighboring jurisdictions and getting your polling on that. And then you'll have a chance to all, the housing advisory board will have a chance to say, hey, do we want to include the 30% or the 50%? Any of those tiers? Then we'll start looking at the ownership categories. I'll give you some additional data on that and then we'll go ahead and start showing you what other folks are doing and then getting polling votes on each one of those AMI thresholds, talking about the minimum affordability period. How long should these restriction units be restricted for for both ownership and rental? So you'll have an opportunity to get your feedback on that. We'll talk about the initial sales price credit and I'll explain that in a little bit more in detail as we go through the manual. And then who should be responsible for administering these units for both the rental development and ownership development, for marketing, screening and selection, property administration, issuing the deed restriction or the shared depreciation agreement, who's gonna handle the resales, the refinances, the annual occupancy checks, the property upgrade request? Is it gonna be the town or will it be the developer? We're gonna get to talk into all that because that's another important piece. Well, we talked about staff capacity for the expedited processing. We also need to talk about staffing capacity for the administration of the pipeline of units that will be generated as a result of this policy. So that's a lot. And that would be covering the other side of the coin. So just to give you a preview of what the next discussion will probably look like. So. Um, and that would be covering the other side of the coin, so just to give you a preview of what the next discussion will probably look like, so.
Okay, that's, that's good. Um, so I, I just want to make a point here for people to think about. I'm, I'm kind of glad that we have this time between the special meetings to think about this, because when, when I went over, uh, this part of the agenda with CJ yesterday, I, I started thinking about, you know, what the implications are kind of on a broader, you know, county-wide or even, you know, community-wide basis. And, and here, here is what I was thinking, that the comparison of the AMI ranges used in nearby communities, you know, for rental, um, housing and for owner-occupied housing, they're, they're, they're very helpful reference points. Um, but there could be a downside to, um, a maj- at least the majority of municipalities in Wake and the surrounding counties not providing homes for households earning less than sixty percent of AMI, just to pick a particular, uh, number. Um, because the problem with this is that it, it could have the effect of continuing to concentrate lower-income households in specific geographic locations, or the other way to think of it is it could have the effect of going against the vision that the Steering Committee put together for our Affordable Housing Plan, which is to be an inclusive community. Um, so, you know, at some point, I think we, we really, um, need to have estimates of the gaps in affordable rental and own, owner-occupied homes by the AMI ranges, uh, to back up decisions that we make in these areas. And I know that, that in the Affordable Housing Plan needs analysis, there was, uh, a, a gap identified for rental housing. Excuse me, sorry, I'm having trouble with my voice. Um, a- and I think it was in the order of two thousand, um, a gap of two thousand rental units for, for lower, uh, income households. Um, and a projected gap of about the same in number going forward five or ten years as more and more essential service workers are needed, uh, in the town. I'm sorry. So my, my point is that, uh, to make decisions about some of these cases, it would be really helpful to have estimates of the, of the gaps in, you know, the need for affordable homes in those different AMI ranges. And, uh, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be really bold here and say that, you know, maybe this is something where the staff would need some additional resources to look into this, uh, whether it's, you know, going to local university, you know, planning departments, or nonprofits, or, or even back to the consultants we use for the Affordable Housing Plan. Uh, and, and doing, you know, doing some, having maybe an outside organization can, you know, uh, governed by, uh, the staff to, to put together some of those estimates, because I, I personally feel like that's what I would need to figure out what the right, what the right, uh, AMI ranges are. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I want to leave enough time so that we can figure out when we're gonna meet next, but, um, please, please think about it, it's, you know, are we gonna fulfill, um, the vision that we put together for the Affordable Housing Plan? Uh, and what's, you know, what's the impact gonna be on, not only on Apex, but on, you know, the surrounding area? Okay, so, so CJ has put up the two proposed dates, uh, with no times, uh, for our next special meeting. I think both of those dates are okay with me. Um, if possible, I'd like to start a little bit after eight fifteen in the morning, but that's, that's my only preference. Um, Audra, I see you have your hand up.
I was gonna say, on both Wednesday and Thursday, I'm available from eight to ten in the morning, but I work until six-thirty. So if we wanted to have a late meeting, I would be fine doing like a, a seven o'clock meeting in the evening, um, on those dates, so.
Okay, okay, good, all right. Thank you.
I can't see the days. I just see the proposed.
Um, so it's, it's Wednesday, June first, and Thursday, June second.
Thank you, pulling up my calendar now.
Sure.
As, from my perspective, with school-aged children, the mornings when they're in school are just so much easier. Seven o'clock at night is a very big challenge for me.
Seven o'clock at night is a big challenge, okay, all right. Thank you Seth. So we have an immediate conflict. Um, so, so, um, I mean, we've discussed this before, and, and I, I don't think people like going to a Friday, but if Wednesday and Thursday are difficult, then, you know, maybe a Friday or, or a Monday is.
I mean, I'm fine with Wednesday morning. Um, I'm, I don't know if it, it sounds like Audra is, uh, Seth is, I don't know how everybody else is.
I, I actually, despite the fact that I was late today, I, I do prefer the morning, uh, meeting times. I just have to get it on my calendar right, but, um, my, my evenings are the only time I can be with my kids, because I don't work at home. Um, and I'm, I guard that very jealously.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Same.
So could we make it eight-thirty in the morning, which is, goes back to what Paul had on his calendar originally?
Sure.
Okay.
I just have to be done by ten fifteen, so I can get to work on time.
Okay, okay. I, I, I think we can do that. Whether the, what, does anyone else have any problems with doing eight-thirty to ten fifteen on either June first or June second?
Prefer, uh, uh, June first, but you know, if, if.
Okay.
Either one of them's fine for me.
Okay.
I prefer June first.
Okay, good, good. All right, so why don't we make it for eight-thirty? Well, do you want to make it eight-fifteen so that we have two full hours? Because we, you know, we seem to, we seem to need the, the time, so let's make it eight-fifteen. Um, is there anyone for whom that is either impossible or very difficult? Okay, so I think we have a, a motion going, being put together for, uh, our next special meeting being at June first, on June first, at, at, starting at eight-fifteen and going to ten fifteen.
All right, I'll make the motion that June first, twenty-twenty-two at eight-fifteen will be our, uh, next meeting.
Okay, thank you Jacob. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who was that? Paul?
Paul Kane.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, and this, this is a true vote. This is a.
You can also, Phil, you can also just say.
Actually, everyone gets to vote on this, because we need Audra and, and Tina in the, in the meeting as well.
Before we vote, I have a que- d- I mean, can we just use Robert's rules? Why do we need to go through a, a, a roll call vote for each item?
You could just say all those in fa- that's what I was about to say. You could just say all those in favor, say aye to Phil, uh, as a, as an option.
Perfect, I, I like that. I, I, I really, I really like that. Okay, all those in favor, if we can do this, say aye. And I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? Say no. All right, I think by unanimous acclaim, we have made our next meeting, and we can adjourn this meeting seven minutes early. Thank, thank you all for joining, and we'll look forward to getting the, the meeting notes about a, a week before, and if you have a chance, please take a look at those before the meeting.